I think you simply. Yeah, I think you just say, "I move approval of an amended agenda." And then the minutes and then the rolling calendar. Is everybody ready? Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. I just want to report that our president is absent due to the illness of her husband, so our thoughts and prayers are with them. He's supposed to come home from the hospital today, so that's the reason that President Ashley is not in attendance. So we'll move forward.
All right, with that then, I would move to approve tomorrow's agenda with the removal of Tab 8 from the Policy Committee's agenda.
So second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be approved with the addition noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I would also move to approve the minutes from the April 19th, 20th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting and the May 17th, 18th, 2017 Board Retreat as submitted.
So second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. The motion carries.
I move to set May 16th, 16th and 17th, 2018 as the date and Boise as a location for the 2018 Board Retreat and June 20th to 21st, 2018 as the date and College of Eastern Idaho as the location for the 2018 regularly scheduled Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. The motion carries and we are thrilled to be able to say we will be going to the College of Eastern Idaho. It's very exciting. Thank you. At this afternoon, we will be undertaking the work session and the topic is college and career advising.
Thank you, Board members. Good afternoon. So when my staff and I were discussing the agenda for a work session or a topic for the work session, we got to thinking about the work and the investment that has been done around college and career advising and readiness and thought that that would be a good topic to bring forward to the Board for a conversation. And so you will recall that when the state appropriated funding for college and career advisors at the school districts, they also required that the school districts submit college and career advising plans. And we wanted to provide you a report on the plans that were submitted for the last academic year and we will be getting plans coming in for the next academic year. And also just wanted to kind of give you an overview of areas that we've been working in in this space and some possible ideas to make more progress. I know that both in the Workforce Development Task Force and in the different work groups of the Higher Education Task Force, there have been a lot of conversations about the need for career exploration and college and career advising and augmenting that effort, of course recognizing that we're only one year into the state's investment at the public school level. But I think there's still a very high level of interest in that. So this afternoon Blake and Carson and Tracy are going to tag team on a number of these areas to provide a report, but we really want this to be conversational. Would encourage the Board to provide input. This isn't intended to be a presentation that Warrior talks to, but we would like to talk with you.
Thank you. So, members of the Board, we thought what we would start with is a good foundation of what we've done, mostly what the Board has done in the past few years to bring focus to the importance of college and career advising, what the current requirements are, and then the resources and different initiatives we have moving forward with the idea that we will be able to discuss priorities and where the Board would like to focus moving forward. So please feel free to interrupt and ask questions at any time, but there will also be time for a conversation at the end, once we provide the update itself. Just for some of you, you'll remember some of these activities, but the Board had identified early on the importance of college and career advising. We had received a federal grant called the College Access Challenge Grant and through that grant, we had provided for a number of pilots, if you will, on different areas regarding different initiatives that would help students to understand the importance of going on as well as how to go on. Starting a few years ago, the Board may remember that we updated the requirement for the eighth grade plans. This plan, this requirement was originally put in place in the late 90s. However, the school districts had not been very successful in implementing the plans as they were intended. So we provided additional language to the high school requirement section of administrative code that just reiterated the same language that was in the middle school section, that these plans are required to be developed with the student and the parents and then updated annually as the student moves through the rest of their K-12 career.
Are you okay to jump in?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have something, I know we wouldn't have it right this second, that would show us what that looks like, exactly what it is, the plan that they're filling out? So you're saying it's something that obviously the student is involved with, the counselor, pardon me, and the parents? And it's a template that every school district uses?
So we do not have a template for the eighth grade plans. They're done in many different ways. The career information system, which actually used to be with the Board's office and was moved over to the Department of Labor, we have worked with them over the years and they have enhanced their system gradually to provide for the eighth grade plans to be developed within that system. But school districts have choices of doing it any way they would like. Some of the examples I have seen have been very simple, check the box templates, while other school districts have done more along the lines of what the original intent is, where they really do work with the students. The parent piece has been weak fairly consistently across the board. Often they just, they develop the plan with the students and then send it home for the parent to sign.
And the plan is to identify courses that they would take in high school? Is that the goal?
The goal was to not only look at what courses they had taken in high school, but what, to identify where they thought that they'd like to, what they'd like to do after high school and then based on that, what courses and areas they could focus on in high school in order to be prepared at the end of high school when they graduated for whatever, you know, area that they were interested in. And we know that when you're working with eighth graders, that they change their minds a lot, so that's why.
I guess that was one thing. I understand the intent and I don't, I'm not arguing against doing it. I just wonder how it's being a conflict because as you mentioned, I don't know of many 14-year-olds that really, other than maybe saying, "I want to be in the NBA", know what they want to do.
One of the things that it does is it really opens that conversation and gets them to start thinking that there is something beyond high school. So it's understood that that could, plan could potentially change every year. I originally wanted to be an astronaut, then an engineer, and here I am.
But I think that's the importance of the plan being updated annually, which is not happening at most schools. So clearly, eighth graders, most eighth graders don't know what they want to do when they grow up, but in order for the plan to be meaningful, it has to be reviewed annually.
One of the issues with the annual update is where does that fall? Whose responsibility is that? In eighth grade, I think many, many school districts and their middle schools or junior highs have that as a part of their advisory period or homeroom, we used to call it when the earth was cooling, but there's actually a section of the day when they can focus on that. So when you move then on to the high school, is that an add-on to the already overly burdened counselors or where does it fit? So it may be that one of the ways to help is to make some suggestions or to put it as a strand in a required course, so that there is a.
Like a careers class.
Well, like some, yeah, or something that's required each year, some little, make it a small strand in something that they have to take, whether that's, I mean, I hate to say English or something because I'll hear from all the English teachers, but some course that is required that they have to take where there's a short amount of time where they have a very focused review of that plan and it's consistent across everyone.
IDLA, working with the Idaho Digital Learning Academy, they have actually developed an online course that would be, that would do that thing as well, that very thing, as well as a few pathway courses that start in the elementary school that are along that same line.
I love the idea of those, but not everyone will use those.
Correct.
So we don't advance our concern about not having it implemented consistently if we rely on an elective or an online or something. So it's just a thought. I don't say it's the solution, but it's just a thought.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing then is the, the goal isn't so much to put them on a track as it is to bring awareness to keep people that, to the parents and to the student, that thinking ahead is going to be important starting right about this year.
That's part of it and I think that's part of the discussion is what do we want to focus on there, you know, is that an area we want to help with?
Yeah, to that point, the Workforce Development Task Force talked a lot about having at least one CTE career awareness course earlier than the eighth grade plan. So when they started that voyage of discovery, they'd have a wider window of what the option space was and that will be mentioned in some form in the Workforce Development Task Force report.
It occurs to me, building on what we heard from NIC this morning, that our terminology and our focus may, it may be a good idea for us to change that to the idea of these pathways. Because I agree with Board Member Kitchfield, eighth graders don't know what they want to be, but many of them have an idea of a broad area in which they have some interest. So this may be an opportunity for us as we're building that system we keep talking about to use the same kind of terminology that we're asking now or moving our higher ed institutions to those pathways and because they could still explore the classes within a particular broader field. And so it might be, you know, just thought of that, it might be a way that we could have a little bit more continuity.
I don't want to steal Tracy's thunder, but I will. You know, at the August meeting, the Board will be considering a proposed rule that would include, and this is consistent with the conversation that we had at the retreat in May, a content standard for college and career exploration or advising. And so, you know, how, whatever particular curriculum area that would fit in, that could possibly be the point in time in which those, these plans could be reviewed and updated.
We just got ahead of you, sorry.
He did steal my thunder, but he is the boss, so. So through the College Access Challenge Grant, there were, as I mentioned before, a number of barriers that were identified and one of our most successful pilots were the near-peer mentor programs. That I'll talk about in just a couple of minutes. But one of the other barriers that was identified was that school districts were using counselors in some very broad ways and not to sound critical of how they were using their counselors, they had a lot of, they have a lot of varied needs and they have an FTE in a person there. But what we found is that it was taking away from the counselor's ability to do a lot of the guidance counseling that they used to do, that a lot of what they were working on was scheduling and testing and then the social emotional issues and the guidance counseling was often pushed to the wayside. Because of that, in part because of that, legislation was introduced two years ago that tried to do two things. One was focus how school districts were using their counselors a little more specific to the school counselor organization's standards. And then the other created a new section of code, Section 331212A, that created a requirement that the school districts, each, school districts and charter schools each create a college and career advising plan that is updated annually. Last year, the Board promulgated a rule that specified requirements for those plans as well as common metrics that needed to be reported as well.
Who reviews those?
The plans are reviewed by, they come to the Board Office and we contracted with Byron to do the review of those plans this last year and we were successful in getting an FTE for this year going forward. So we will have a college and career advising program manager that'll be responsible for the review of the plans moving forward.
So do the school districts get feedback?
The school districts do get feedback. In this first year, we really focused on working with the school districts and helping them to understand what the requirements were. We provided templates early on that they could use, not, that they were not required to use. Of the close to 160 LEAs that needed to submit the plans, because it's only for, so for the charter schools, it was only for those that had students in grades eight through 12. We so far have had 76 that were completely, fully compliant with the rule, 44, another 44 that were missing one piece in particular and that was a budget piece we had asked for to get, give us a baseline of what they had been doing and then what they were going to be doing with the new money that they had received specifically for the purpose. And then we have another handful of schools, the majority of which are charter schools that we have not been able to get plans for. The ones that are not charter schools, there's about five school districts that are some of our smallest school districts. The, so the, the bill that created the plan requirement, the changes that were proposed to the counselor section, that did not go through, so that part didn't, but the, obviously the plan requirement did. In FY17, the legis, in the first year, the legislature did not appropriate any funding for it. That bill went through late in the session. So FY17 was the first year that funds were appropriated for the implementation of it. It was $5 million statewide for FY18. That was increased by $2 million, so they'll have $7 million statewide. The funding distribution, I can go into the weeds if you want, but basically it, it's based on the number of students in grades eight through 12 that the school districts, charter schools have, the minimum amount being $5,000 and the maximum amount was just over $600,000. Throughout this last year, we completed a number of regional trainings, working with both CIS, the Career Information Systems, the Department of Labor and the Department of Education and Career Technical Education. So we did joint trainings around the state to help school districts understand the models that were identified in that bill. So it identified six specific models that we found very effective or allowed for them to implement a different model that was research-based. The models that were identified were the near-peer mentors, transition coordinators, which you heard a little bit about earlier from NIC President, and then school counselors or teachers as advisors, a model, a remote coaching model, a high school advisement model, which uses a advisor, advisee teams at the high schools that work with groups of students, and then the model that has been used with the Gear Up Idaho Program. The plans are due October 1st of each year. The required metrics for the plans are the percent of learning plans reviewed annually by grade level, starting with grade nine, the number and percent of students who go to some form of post-secondary education, one and two years out after graduation, the number of students graduating high school with a career technical certificate or an associate's degree. We did not include a dual credit or advanced opportunities as one of the minimum requirements because we already collect that information by school district and report it in the dual credit report, so it felt like a duplication. School districts can add their own measures that they've identified for showing that their plans have been effective and many school districts have chosen to use that information. They're also required in their continuous improvement plans to report the college readiness metrics, which is based on the college entrance exam scores, so we didn't require that one in this, in these plans either. So in addition to the college and career advising plans, we have.
Tracy.
Of all those different models, do we know how many or in what proportion they're being adopted and how, if only anecdotally successfully, they're being implemented?
At this point, because it's the first year, it's hard to determine how successful they have been. Most school districts chose to use their funding to expand their traditional counselors. Other school districts, obviously smaller proportion, hybridized some of the identified models, if you will, so they're using transition coordinators in conjunction with their counselor. And then in Eastern Idaho, we've had a large number of school districts that are still, that are using the near-peer model, also in conjunction with their counselors. Anecdotally, as we've worked with the school districts, a lot of them have told us they're going to use a different model and now that they understand better what those, through the training that has been provided, what the models are and how to implement them. But we won't know how many actually change until we get the new plans in, in October.
Do they specify which model they're going to go to? I mean, I know, for example, CSI has a number of, I think.
Transition coordinators.
Transition coordinators that attempt to serve that, part of that role for local school districts.
The near-peer models and the transition coordinators are the ones they've identified most specifically. The, one of the problems we've had with the remote coaching, which was a model that was identified for some of our remoter, more remote school districts, we haven't, while the model itself was identified as, as a model that's worked, we, we haven't been very successful in having someone they could go to, to do that. Originally, we were looking at PTEC and what they were providing with remote coaching, but they had, they at the same time changed their focus some, so they do have a group of schools that they're working with that have been happy with that. So in the meantime, we've also been working with IDLA to provide through their platform some remote mentoring that we're hoping will be ready to go, that looks on, it's on track to be ready to go for the fall.
And Board Member Hill, with that complete access, or College Access Challenge Grant, some of the funding was used in that to hire near peers. And so we have a few more years of near peer data and, and we're actually working on a study right now to review some of those near peers that have already been done, as Tracy mentioned, a lot in, in Eastern Idaho. I know Weezer has had a near peer for quite some time. And so we're looking at some of the activities that those near peers were doing to see what kind of an effect it had. So we will be, we will be publishing that and producing that, so.
Something else that we found is that, is that different, the same words mean different things. I mean, transition coordinators means one thing to one school district or institution and, and something else to others. And so it's hard to get an apples-to-apples analysis of, of the efficacy of that, of that particular model.
Before we move on to that plan, so you mentioned that the plans need to be submitted on October 1st. What kind of turnaround can school districts expect from this process that will really help them?
That's difficult at this point to say because we're working with so many school districts to help them. I mean, they can expect an immediate response within the first few weeks that we've received their plan, but as far as working with them, a lot will depend on how many completely change their plans or if they update their plans. That'll take less time if it's just an update to review and get back to them. But in the meantime, we do have 44-plus school districts that we are, we have been working with throughout the year. So those school districts, because they're actively engaged with our staff, are already getting feedback as they submit and ask questions.
I guess my reason for asking is I would hope that this system, I think it's good for schools to identify how they're going to accomplish these goals, but I think it needs to be something more than just a compliance document that gets turned in and then you get an email back a couple of weeks later that says, "Hey, thanks for turning it in", and then you never hear back from them. I think that type of thing is frustrating and it doesn't serve us very well. And I'm not suggesting that that's what will happen, but you know, Blake can help us on the communication of, "You're going to go to the work and you're going to turn it in and this is what we're going to do." What's the return on their investment of their time?
And that's really the purpose of that staff person that we, the FTE that we got was, so that there was somebody who could really work and focus on the, the plans with the school districts and the other college and career advising initiatives and identifying different training that they need, which is what we did in developing the regional trainings. We did this last year and really getting involved and working with them. With that being said, we do have some school districts that really don't want our help and don't understand, don't appear to really understand the potential of what they could do with these plans, so.
Well, and obviously you're not going to force the folks, I mean, outside of them not getting, fitting within the parameters of the expectations, but I do think that built into submitting the plans is whether they want it or use it or not, is an expectation that you're going to get something back.
Yeah.
That says, "Hey, we went through this" and, and I would attach to that, if you, if we've obviously gone to the trouble to identify, and I've made a list of things that people are doing around the state, let's share that with those folks in some kind of a one-pager that says, you know, "This is what we've taken out of your plan and you might be interested to know that around the state, these are the handfuls of ideas that are showing success."
Exactly. And in fact, and that is one of the commitments we have made to them, is that we, as we identify plans that are using different models, that are really exceptional plans, that we would make those available back out to other school districts additionally. Oh, that thought just went away. So it, we really are working on that. Oh, and the other point was, when we started working on, with them on their go-on rates for their students, that was actually a really good opportunity to talk to them about the data that we have available at the statewide level and to get them to use it, to talk to them about how they could use the different data points. So it opened the door because they get that information about their own go-on rates from us so that they can use it in their. from us, so that they can use it in their plans. And those have really generated some good conversations with school districts about what data's available and how they could use it to develop different things that they're doing even outside of the college and career advising plans.
Well, it's so critical that it is identified as meaningful work as opposed to busy work and just another plan.
We've tried to be as helpful as possible this first year, in particular, in working with the districts, and the conversation really has changed a lot from the beginning of the year, and that's why, while we still have a number of districts that did, were not able to be, come fully compliant this year, it, it really hasn't been a, we got you, you didn't do this conversation. It's, you know, here's some suggestions, here's some things that other school districts are doing, you know, here's where you can go for more information, or, you know, that kind of conversation.
When's this person going to be hired?
So, we have Byron on board who's continuing the work, so we're, there will be no gap, and the intent is to keep him until he gets tired of us.
So he'll, he'll continue in that position?
So, yeah, so there won't be a gap or having a new person at this point come in and start over again. So in addition to the plans, we've provided a number of tools, and Blake is going to talk about one of our most comprehensive tools, the Next Steps Idaho site. I do want to throw out there, we did, on the, on that site as well as on the board's site, we did do a, a pretty in-depth description of each of the models for school districts to use to get, to help with that common understanding of what was meant if you say the model you're using is a transition coordinator or a near-peer mentor.
As Tracy said, I'm going to give you sort of an update on the Next Steps site and some of the, the features that are going to be added to it over the next six months or so as well. Just to refresh your memory, it was actually two years ago at this, at the, last time we were on, on campus here for a board meeting, that we introduced the Next Steps site along with directed admissions, all in one presentation. To, to give you a sense of timing, I think that was Rod Lewis's last meeting, for those of you who remember Rod. Byron Yankee has done a tremendous amount of work on this site and deserves a lot of credit in developing this site and in trying to, to make sure that it can serve as sort of a one-stop informational credible shop for all things going on. He tapped into not only his own experience, but also focus groups, students and families and educators from across the state to, to identify resources and that they thought would be helpful, what the feel should be, what the look should be. And, and, you know, one of the most interesting things he learned is that to this day, people still find Idaho or the government of Idaho to be a very credible source, which is why you see even in the site, we haven't tried to, to make this sound like something different, something crisp and new, other than the look, you know, by clearly saying, you know, nextsteps.idaho.gov. It's a trustworthy site being from the state of Idaho. The funding from this had come from the College Access Challenge Grant. Since that, and that grant has since run out, but the, the board office and the board has maintained a commitment to the site, and you'll see that we're, it's a continually evolving site, not only to, to match needs and, and resource needs that, that we hear about, but also to change with, with the overall college landscape or going-on landscape. Not to be outdone by Carson, I've got several slides here for you. However, I'm not, you'll see me skip past a few of them, and others we may spend a moment or two on. First of all, this is the top of the, the homepage, and, and what you see is we've, we've crossed the top, put four students, four families, four educators, tried to make it very clear, very crisp on, on, for those three populations to find information. You'll see that for the students, we provide by grade, this is an example of an 11th grade of, a plan for the year of, of what you should be doing or what steps you should take to, to go on. As I zoom in, you can see we also do it by season, so here's your steps for the fall, 11th grade, or the winter, the spring. One of the more interesting things we've done, that's been done over the last year is, they used to say glossary instead of explore on that fourth tab, until we learned from a focus group about a year ago that students now, today, don't look at glossaries. And I, it was a very, it's a very little-used word now. Words like explore, dictionary, things like that, suddenly they, they know what that tab's for, but glossary, it went from being one of the most underutilized tabs on this website to being one of the busier ones now. So again, it's sort of just that, even the little parts of the evolution. What you'll see though, for example, also to, to help make this a faster, quicker resource is right across the front, one of the things that, that we saw from the analytics that everybody wants to know more about is Idaho's colleges and universities, what kind of information's available. So that's become a front and center tile, if you will, on the site, and when clicked on, this is an example of Lewis Clark State Colleges site. It provides a variety of facts, statistics, location maps, and school-specific links about, about each institution. This is content that was provided by the institutions themselves, so we know that, that it's, it's accurate. We feel confident in, in what that, that basic information is, and it'll lure interested students into seeking more information. One of the other important things we found out was, you know, we may have a student in Preston who has no idea where Lewiston is, and that's why we put a map on there. It might be intuitive to us because we think about these institutions all the time, but there, you know, kids in Sandpoint who, who might not have a, a great sense of how far away Pocatello are there from, so trying to provide some of that base information.
Blake?
Yes, ma'am.
Andy has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Traffic statistics, what do we have on that?
We have, we use two different analytic tools. One, one is provided by the state, the other's provided by, we use Google Analytics as well. We look at over the last year, for example, ninety-one thousand unique hits. We can break it down by specific sites, there are specific pages within this. We can also break it down by where they come from, did they search for it through Google or Bing or what have you versus, did they come straight from the West Data site is often a, a popular source. Another one that's very interesting we see is the California, around BSU's recruiting office in California, we see access from that site itself. But we can slice and dice the, the analytics any way any of you would like to, to see them. We're happy to bundle that and provide that to the board itself.
Ninety-one thousand unique hits over what?
A one-year period of time, and you see, you know, you'll see like in October, right after the directed admissions, and I don't have this on a slide, but I've got it printed out here, you'll see spikes, you know, kind of coincide with those major milestones of, here's the directed admissions letter, here's, then we had one month later, reminder letter, you see another spike. We tend to see a spike at the beginning or around Thanksgiving with college application week, another spike when they come during Christmas break and just afterwards, as you see SAT results and final tests come through for that last sem, that, that winter or fall semester. So it's, and then, you know, this time of year, as you would expect, it flattens out. You know, you go into summer, you don't see a lot of access to the site, and then we'll see it again.
What's then total traffic in that same year period?
Total traffic?
Total hits.
I think I'll have to get that one for you, the two pages I printed out, I don't see that particular spot. Okay.
Just be interested to see what our repeat users are, is it one-time hit or are they coming back and using it? And then what you're telling us, I think, is that the primary users of this are probably seniors who are being sent there, directed there when they get that, that direct admissions letter, which I presume references nextsteps.idaho.gov on that letter.
Yes, absolutely.
How else do people find out about this web? How do, how else do families or kids find out?
So we also, the television advertising that we do for directed admissions drives them to Next Steps as well as the letter itself. We use, we do an annual tour of the state for what we call counselor days, where the different college admission representatives go around the state and talk about their institutions with counselors and what's new, and we do a training on that. We also do, have done trainings through Idaho School Counselors Association, their annual meeting in October. Additionally, we have a marketing kit that has gone out to every school, that parents can see both in the school as well as they take home brochures. We have magnets and stickers that are useful bookmarks, you know, that have been passed out to students and passed out at PTA or PTO meetings. It's been a fairly handy sort of grassroots marketing kit that was also paid for through the College Access Challenge Grant. The, I think one of the more unique features you see on the website, and it's on just about every page, is this opportunity to connect with, with Idaho college recruiters. And what happens there is when a student taps on, well, really any user, but particularly a student taps on that box, the recruit-me function allows them to con, to directly contact a university or college and say, I'm interested in you. Message goes immediately to that school after they fill out a form like this. It's, it's a very simple five, five questions of who you are, how to contact you, and what schools you're interested in, and then you get the, but once you hit submit, you get the box that says, nice, we have your information, I've sent it along. I think one of the more important things about this also to note is, this is pass-through data, it's not data that we keep at the board office. There's always concern about what happens, that information, it goes right on through to the universities, and this is a self-select option by the student and family. So we're always very careful even with this site to make sure that we are careful and respectful of, of student data and information. A couple of examples of what the four families tab might have, or does have, is obviously information about directed admissions, since we drive them all to that site to do the application process. They also have access to the grade-level checklist because we want this to be a conversation at home. There's other information around financial aid, advanced, advanced placement test, dual credit, what questions to ask your counselors to engage them in the conversation. And, because really, you know, and, and as you see when we moved to four educators, the idea is to create that circle of conversation between the student, the parent, and, and the school itself. One way that we help keep educators up to date is we have a Next Steps newsletter that goes out to the schools. Teachers and counselors can sign up for that newsletter, and we send out con, you know, when there's new content on there, when the seasons have changed and the, the student plans shift over to here's what the next set of steps you should take. And it also provides a, a variety of downloads that can be used in the schools. Again, we put the marketing toolkit online as well. There's several other downloadable documents, classroom resources, information about college and career advising plans, such as, you know, that Tracy just went over, the check, copies of the checklist for students, and, and helping educators foster that conversation with what kind, getting your students to ask the right questions about going to college. Again, there's also information about testing tools, SAT and ACT, and how to study for those, as well as, one example is the Near Peer Resource Guide that's available. You'll see here, a couple of, just an example of when you go to college and career advising, the list of downloadable files, we try to provide examples of each kind of, each kind of model, so that schools can, can choose what may be best for their students, as well as vid, instructional videos. And this is just one example, this is the, an example of the guide that you can download for the near-peer mentor resource guide, or if you're interested in, in talking to students and getting students to participate in Idaho CIS system, or if you are looking at how can we educate our, our students and families on the FAFSA, again, College Board puts out some great materials as well. We also, for, really it's geared to, to all users, we have a news and info site where we put up, it's not always self-written, a lot of times we, we provide links to other credible resources and news articles with updates on the college-going process. Well, as I just said, from the, and the last thing, I think this goes to something that is of great interest to Dr. Hill and Dr. Clark, and we've heard them talk about it, career exploration and professional training. There's always been a certain amount of information on there, but as they talked about, you know, identifying pathways, you know, to, to certain careers or providing, you know, helping students when they have a broad idea of what they want to do, how to hone that into maybe some interesting careers, not job listings, but interesting careers. So what the board has developed, thanks to Idaho Business for Education, who's funded this project, it's called Future Finder, and the idea is to produce career options for students based on a, a series of very quick questions for them to answer. This is, I'll show you a few development pages, it's not on Next Steps yet, we, we anticipate it will be on after a sort of a final review meeting in July. But the idea is, it's, it's like Next Steps, and it's modeled in a very sort of popular format that, that's familiar to students. It's informed with multiple data sys, data sets and systems of categorization, and while it's not necessarily a scientific tool, it does use a lot of different data elements and data sources to help students maneuver this, this sort of career exploration. We use Bureau Labor Statistics information, we use Idaho Department of Labor information. We've also used, and I, I'm not terribly familiar with all these codes, but we paired the ONET codes with some well-known personality-type research done by psychologist John Holland, and the idea is that it creates an algorithm that after students complete a five-to-ten-minute question-answer system, they come up with, with hopefully some options or some guidance on careers that might be of interest to them. We used, never to, to let the legislature go to waste, we use the Senate pages to test this on. They seemed fairly excited about it and found it to be useful. It could have been the pizza we provided, but I, I'm not sure. So what it is, is obviously this is the front page, right? Students take a very, what's, what I would call are fun or an engaging quiz that asks them questions in three key sections. The first one is, what are you good at? That's always, you know, what, what is up your alley? And it requires students identifying, click on several areas they feel are, that they're good at, which can range, range from computer programming to, I'm a good listener. You know, I mean, it really is a, a fairly broad set of, of options. Then they move into, what do you, what are you good at? Sorry, wrong slide. What are you into? And this section uses a thumbs-down option, very simple thumbs-down option that, as students go through these choices, they, the, it, I'm sorry, let me start over. It utilizes a thumbs-up, thumbs-down selection with the next choice sliding into view after a student decides on the previous choice. Both the images and the language are used to describe each option and ensure that students aren't limited by the visuals. So here you see reading, here you see coming up with new ideas. I enjoy brainstorming, discovering new ideas and, and processes to solve challenging problems. So they work through a series of those questions. And I apologize, this slide's a little bright and hard to see, but then they go into the final category, which is I'd Rather Be, and it allows them to answer based on a slider again, and the students can choose where along the spectrum they identify between two options. For example, they can choose between researching a project or leading a project. What, what is their interest there? And then the final, then the results come through. They're tailored to each student's individual profile and include Idaho-specific factors such as projected long-term demand, AKA hot jobs. You know, you, you hear about hot jobs a lot. The results are filtered by in-demand careers, careers that match a student's interests, and careers that match a student's skills. You can see that, that students can click and access more information about each career. So in this one, there's a, a series of options, one being software developers, so let's say they click on software developer. From there, they can learn more about that career. The data includes an expanded career description, including what people do on a daily basis, an entry level and experience salary, salary ranges. And ultimately, if you look down, is this mouse working? There's the mouse. If you look in this sort of box right here, it says programs of study, and that's still being built out, but that will take them to Idaho post-secondary institutions that offer those programs that are required for, for that specific career option. So it gives them somewhat of a pathway. And again, it's not designed to link them to jobs specifically, but link them to career paths that, that have a high potential of jobs in Idaho. We, as I said, we believe this will be done after a final run-through meeting in July, a content meeting, and able to upload it by the fall. This is something that, that has, we've done with IB in great partnership, and we really appreciate IB coming to the board and offering us this solution to add to Next Steps, and I think it ties into a couple of other features you'll see coming in Next Steps. You'll see more prominence around career technical education, including on the front page. The- on the front page, that has more links to not only CT's website, but CT's stories, videos, careers that can come from CTE, and where certain programs are taught across the state. And then a lot of the content that we'll do for the next eight months or so, it's really just updates. A lot of updated information. I think we've gotten to the point where we feel like the format is relevant, and the format is one that's user-friendly to all of our audiences. Now, it's about adjusting the content. I know I've had conversations with Dr. Hill about recognizing that there are industry-specific certifications and education opportunities. How do we incorporate those features into this? How do we ensure that students understand necessarily the, what, any major between certificate and bachelor's and associates in the middle, what those options really are? I mean, there's more majors and more content areas than I think most students recognize when they are thinking about college in eighth grade, ninth, or beyond. So, those are our challenges. And somewhat redefining what college is, as Dr. Clark has mentioned to me, you know, college isn't your mom or dad's college from 40 years ago. It's very different. There are courses taught there that were never taught before, and degrees available that were never even considered at the time.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who, besides the logical people, have this on their website as a link? Do our institutions have it linked onto their websites?
Um, that is a great question that I'll have to get you an answer to.
What about the Department of Labor?
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
Department does.
School districts.
Some.
Some school districts. But I, uh...
This is fantastic information. It's just a matter of connecting it with people so that they know that it's available. And I think particularly, parents, we can help shepherd their kids towards it and get some of these answers. And so, I guess I would say, if we can think of the logical places to have it, if it's not there already, I mean, some we can control, and some we can just kindly ask. But I can't imagine that some of, like, our IBE friends and some of these other entities, ISBA, IEA, I mean, this is just general great information. And make that list of who needs to link to this, or who we could ask to link to it. That would just increase our traffic and awareness.
I think based on our analytics, we can tell who has it, as well as tell where people are coming from to, so that we can see who should have. Absolutely.
I think it's really important for us to publicly acknowledge our thanks to IBE for their, for their assistance with this. And also, and I guess Mr. Skoggin can pass that along to them. But I would, I would also say, it's the kind of partnership that we need to make the work, to get the work done. I think it's great, and I think it ought to be, we ought to find as many places to hook it to as we can. It's terrific.
Yep.
Yes, so, my compliments. It's also got a nice format here. So, you've got Google Analytics. Do you use some of the analytics you can do, which are location-dependent when it's accessed from a phone?
They, yes, Dr. Hill, that, and I don't know my technical terms that well.
Nor do I, otherwise.
But that has been done, as well as, and you point out an interesting feature it has, it's mobile-device friendly, because early on, when they started developing the site, there was a review done of how the internet is accessed in the state of Idaho, and the number-one source was cell phones. So, that is a completely adaptive.
Particularly 18 and below. We don't even know what this is.
Well, and because of our agricultural, you know, our agricultural economy, there's, you see it a lot, because it's more convenient than having a place to put your, you know, set a computer down and do that work, so.
And not for the short term, but I understand from people on the task force I'm running that, once you do that, you can push, just like if you search for a car, all of a sudden you'll start getting ads for a car, or from your local car dealer. You can start pushing direct, have you considered ISU information straight to that phone that accessed ISU on this?
That is, that's a great point. We started that work last year and actually had a vendor in place to help us. And it turned out that they were, the vendor we were about to use stores that information, and we could not reach an agreement with that particular one to delete it, even though it was self-selected by an individual to receive those push notifications.
Guess Congress hasn't helped you either with that recently?
But that's something we will continue, we'd like to reinstate that feature. We just need to find a vendor who'll work with us on meeting the state law and data requirements that we have.
And a comment on Future Finder, I haven't seen it operate, but it looks like it answers a lot of my concerns around Next Steps. But the question then is, where does it appear? I mean, is it right up front with those first three tiles? Because I think you have to grab and point out to whoever is accessing it. By the way, while you've been speaking, I've been accessing the responses. Quick.
Good.
You know, it needs to be up front. The range of possibilities needs to be there immediately.
The intent absolutely is to put it up front, because we think that can help guide particularly students and families on their exploration within the site, when they look at different colleges or universities, or financial aid resources, or as we go on and continue to look at professional education opportunities and such.
So, does something like this make sense to have in an app form? I know that can be pricey as one of the platforms, but what you're describing to me sounds like there might be some value in investigating an app. Obviously, we know the difference, you don't have to go through a browser. And if it's something that a student started on a process, through an app on your phone, you could save, you can personalize, you can log in, you can do some of those things that you could go back and finish, you could check different schools. It's easy to get to. I mean, that's why we all have apps, because it's easier to get to than going through a browser.
You know, that's a great idea, and I think, hopefully Byron's listening right now. He's calling the company we used to develop this.
It's not really expensive.
No, they're usually fairly inexpensive to develop, once you have the base information.
I was really impressed here, when I clicked on the student tab and then found five grade-specific things, starting with eighth grade. I mean, if we can get students to this app, or to this site, or whatever, it can be really helpful to them with grade-level specific information. This is very robust, very impressive.
They did a...
Really cool.
Thank you. Byron and Strategies 360 was the vendor, I think deserved all of that credit.
It's great.
You know, and I just want to mention, Board Member Hill, you talked about the location. Interestingly enough, one of the locations that we saw using Next Steps quite a bit was Utah. And then just a couple of months ago, Blake and I had a conversation. We got a phone call from the Commissioner of Higher Education, their office in Utah, wanting to duplicate the Next Steps website for their state, because of those kind of things that Board Member Clark also said.
And that was quite refreshing, considering that often in the Capitol, we always hear, "This is what Utah did."
[laughing]
Yeah, we like to have them replicate us. What's great work. Please, I hope, Byron, if you're listening, fantastic job. If you're not listening, we'll make sure you get the message.
Hurry and get the name taken care of on the Apple Store, so we can have the name.
Absolutely.
I think this is our cue to turn, I'm sorry.
Well, just one other thing I was going to note. A few slides back, Blake showed the front page, which has the three tiles, and he noted that one of the tiles was for our colleges and universities. We're also going to add a fourth tile for CTE, because that's one of the feedback points that we got, that we need to make that more prominent.
And then, I would just add to Dr. Hill's comment about different ways to reach out to students, is that something also that we've talked about with some of the summer melt activities that hopefully we'll get to talk about later today as well, is that that's one thing that has been identified actually nationally, is that it's not enough to wait for the students to come to you, that it's really shown to be beneficial to put things in place that actually reach out and touch the students in that sense, as far as identifying things they should be doing in timelines.
So, I just want to add, one of the other things that we're doing, and one of the other efforts that we are working on, that will be rolled out this fall as the new application system. It's known as Apply Idaho. And since I've already been beat up about my slides, we're actually going to do a live demo of it this time. But this is, this is going to also be accessed through the Next Steps site. And it's been designed to look like Next Steps, so when a student clicks on this Apply Idaho link from Next Steps, it'll look like they're in the same location. But a student will click on this, and this will be, this will be directed to them through those direct admissions letters. So, seniors, at the beginning of their senior year, will get their direct admissions letter. It will tell them to go to Next Steps, and then also to click on the link there on Apply Idaho to apply for college. So, what happens is a student will come onto this page, this is the landing page for it, click on "Get Started," and there are a few questions here that they're asked. Their first name, middle name, last name, gender, EDUID. Now, that EDUID is an important one. What the purpose has been behind this is try to limit, or try to ease the burden of students applying for college. What we found, especially during College Application Week, a student would spend the entire class period to fill out an application for one institution, and then if they wanted to do another institution, they'd have to fill out the same information. The thought has been, first of all, why, why can't we have a system that they only need to input all that information once? And then the second thought was, we already collect a lot of this information. Why would we, can't we leverage the information that's already being collected to greater ease the burden here for the students? So, by having them enter their EDUID and their name, their birth date, that matches it back to the data that's already been submitted to the State Department of Education through their IC system. And when that comes up as a match, then the student's able to continue on. If it comes up that their name doesn't match, or their EDUID doesn't match, and we do fuzzy logic matching with the name, so that if, if a student puts on their, I mean, while it says legal first name, if they put on their bill and their name is William, that will show as a potential match. But if it comes up that something is wrong, then it'll tell the student, "You need to check with your counselor and make sure that you've got the correct EDUID." At that point, the student puts in an email address and creates a password. And then they can register for the site. So, we've already got a student here that we put on, so that I can show you the next phase of that. So, again, as Board Member Critfield mentioned, it's really helpful if a student can do something and then log back into the system. This will allow you to do that. So, if a student starts the application process, leaves, then they can go access it from another place, log into the system, and all of their information that they put in is already saved. So, then when the student hits "Continue," then they're taken to this first page. This is their personal information. It pulls their first name and their last name from their registration. So, they can change that if they have a different preferred first name. So, again, if they put in William, but they go by Bill, they can put in Bill as their preferred first name. Their citizenship and tribal affiliation, so they mark down whether they're a U.S. citizen, a resident, a non-U.S. citizen, or a permanent resident eligible non-citizen. So, those are the three options there. Then if the student is a member of an Idaho tribe, they can mark down which Idaho tribe they are a member of. They, oh, sorry. Then they put in phone numbers for contact information there. Then the next page here is their address. IC does not collect addresses, and so we ask the student to submit their address, and then if they have a separate mailing address here. And the third page here is where they mark down when they are graduating high school and when they plan to start in college. So, we know that there are students, quite a number of students in this state, that have other plans directly after high school. And so, we can, we can show that. And then when the data is, when this application information is submitted to the school, then the institution can then talk to the student about deferment plans and things like that. At that point, the student comes down here and can start selecting institutions. Now, as I mentioned, this is a student that we already had, and so when a student first comes in here, this would be, this is how it would look. So, they add an institution. They've got a dropdown here for all eight institutions in the state, and we can change that one to College of Eastern Idaho. We will get that one done. So, a student decides that they want to attend CSI, is one of their options. They can then come over here to this next one, which is an area of interest. And this goes back to what Board Member Clark was saying about pathways.
Can I just ask a question while we're at this point? Could you set it up so they could, or maybe it's in there, I don't see it, but could you, where it says add an institution, could you put "or" in this one field?
To do, sorry, what was that?
Or.
Or?
Or three of them?
Oh.
Just add that, so you can do it right on this page at that time. You don't have to go back and redo them.
Yes. So, I'll show you. So, in College of Southern Idaho, let's say that the student is interested in business and economics, they know that. Their intended major then filters down through this area of interest. And these are uploaded by the institutions. So, these are institution-specific. So, let's say they're interested in economics.
Yes, they do.
Then you can add another institution.
Okay.
So, what we've heard is, and students may consider a double major, so you can add another major from an institution. You can add up to two institutions, or two majors from each institution. So, CSI would be on here again. So, then if I added another institution, now from this dropdown list, CSI is not included, because the student has already selected two majors from CSI. If they don't need to filter from the area of interest, they can select from the dropdown here of all their majors. And if the student knows that they're interested in biology, they can start typing in biology, and anything with bio comes up, so they can select that.
Is there an, I don't know yet, option?
There is. So, the first option under each institution...
I'm still in my eighth-grade-year mode. I don't know if I want to do that.
Right.
So, Boise State here, the first one, they're undecided, they consider general studies. So, that top option would be, would be their, "I don't know." If we add another one, and let's say Lewis Clark, their top one, oh, their top one shows accounting. So, I'll have to look at that one. Here's an undeclared. So, it would be different by each institution again.
Would undeclared be the default, though? And would, and it should be, should you have to look for that, or should it be?
Well, like I said, how it's supposed to show is the top option. So, the very first one, if a student selects an institution and then looks under their intended major, the top option should be their undeclared, undecided, general studies, however they name it.
This may not be the topic for you in presenting this, but it seems to come up in the several meetings I've now been in, where we're talking about trying to make it easy for students to look at a system. So, shouldn't something, before they're even in the system, shouldn't there be a consistent major, or I don't know, or some of these in there, so they don't have to, they say, "Well, it's here, but it's not there. How do I do that?" So, if we had some consistency, I don't know if you can do that here, if it requires changing the entire system.
So, Board Member Skoggin, we've talked about that, of doing kind of these meta-majors, looking at that's how we filter down, and how, any common naming. Each institution, we've worked with the provost on this, each institution has a little different naming convention. So, that answer is above my pay grade, but...
Students should conform to the institutions and work.
Currently, that's how it's set up.
And we might be more bold than that, to just say, it might very likely be the, it might very likely be the preference of the Board not to have them be different, for the ease of understanding for our students.
It very well could be, yes.
Since we haven't discussed that, we can't say that's our feeling, but it might very well be.
Carson, you could use the same fuzzy logic.
We could, yeah. Now, now, one of the things is... Now, now one of the things is, is I do need to, to thank the, the provost for working on this. When, when looking at, at these lists, you know, there are a number of majors that each institution has, and some institutions have a different major for a political science, Bachelor of Science degree, and a political science Bachelor of Arts degree. And, and we worked with them to come up with, when you look at their intended major, just to say it's a political science degree. So there has been a lot of work in trying to get, trying to get similarities and, and agreement across all the institutions already. Now, there still is room that, that, that there could be more, but there has been quite a bit of work by the institutions to, to get to this point, and, and I thank them for that. This fourth page here, and there's a, it's hard to see, but there's a tracking line here, are just some supplemental questions. These are mainly for scholarship opportunities for the student. So what's the highest level of education by your parent or guardian? Any institutions that your parent or guardian have already attended? If you're a parent or guardian as a U.S. veteran, and have you ever been in court-ordered foster care?
Go ahead.
Please.
Now, what I was going to say, you could be more friendly than just submit, because this is to their advantage rather than the chore, so if there were a better title to that, saying this'll help.
Yeah.
That was where I was headed. I think people would see that and go, why do you want to know that?
Yeah, that was very accurate.
Okay.
And it seems like that maybe people would feel it was private information, they just don't know why.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we tell them for scholarship purposes, if you'd like to add this information, it will help us to give you more scholarship information.
Help us give you more, help us help you.
Yeah. We, we can definitely change that. That's, that's an easy fix. At this point, the student submits. Now, as I mentioned, this student, we already created this student, so they would resubmit. So a student can log back on if they change their major or change an institution. They want to add an institution, they would then resubmit their application.
They, they've already submitted, and now on this page, they're resubmitting?
They can resubmit. This, the first time they go through this, it would be a submission.
Oh, it's because you've been doing it over and over.
Now, this test student, yes, we've already submitted this test student before, and so now it says resubmit. But at this point, the student is done.
What does foster care have to do with it?
There, there are scholarships that are available for, for kids who have been in, in foster care. When they, they click on Submit, it again tells you which institutions you've applied to, what the majors are. You check a box saying, yes, I verify that I am that person, and then they hit Confirm. Says that it's been submitted successfully. You'll receive an email confirmation from the Apply Idaho website, and then the colleges or universities that you've selected will be, will receive that information, and you should expect to hear from them. So at this point, the student is, is done. They've submitted their application. So an institution then would log in through this same site. But if I was CWI. Now I come in and, and it shows that I'm an institution user. I can review the major list that's submitted on there, so I can see how everything ties. And then on the applicants tab, now, we just refreshed the, the build of this, and so everything's, there's nothing in here right now. But as a student submits, then they would come on, under this new applicant tab, and they would start to pile up. So there would be a row for each student. The institution can come in and then download a file, either in a CSV format, which is just one single student per line, and, and that's what they can use to upload into their system. Or if they desire, then they can download an XML file, which will have all of the data that we've got on that student. They, it'll have a transcript, for instance, from their, their high school years. So the institution can then have that to work on. Then there's a way to filter down, so if I, if I log on to the system and I want to look at those students who applied before that deadline that we gave them in the direct admissions letter, you can filter those students, and then you can re-download those applicants. So this is how an institution will use it and how they collect those applications that have been submitted through this process. We did two trial runs with some students at two schools, at Capital High School and at Kuna High School, and we had students who went in, confirmed their email address. We didn't give them any instructions. We just led them to the site and said, go for it and see, see how it is. We, we wanted to just see if they could navigate on their own. We had students who went in, set up their email, verified their email, and applied to three institutions in under five minutes, that those institutions would then receive all of those, those applications. It was easy, the students were done in a matter of minutes, which then in talking to the counselors that we were working with at those schools said, if we did this during College Application Week, I no longer have to use my entire class period to fill out one application. They can fill out an application, and then I can spend the rest of the time working on FAFSA or something like that. One thing I'll note, at Kuna, one of the students who finished quickly then went into the code of the website and started looking at the code and made suggestions on coding improvements, so maybe they could write our feature finder app for us.
That's right.
That's really good.
I do want to, just go back to my point before. I've had four students go through the Idaho high school system, and not one of them going into college knew what they were going to go into. And I didn't, I'm concerned that I kind of expressed that you ought to have every institution have the exact list of majors. I don't, that's not my suggestion at all. I don't think you have to have that, but I do think that for the, I'm not sure yet if we want to, you know, I, I'm afraid that students like my kids would look at this and go, oh, I'm not ready to fill this out yet because they, I need to pick something. And they don't know general studies is, that's still something. And then if our default is what I call academic language, so undeclared is very much a jargon term that everybody in academia knows and no kids in school know, because they haven't been to college yet. So it just seems like if you had one that said, I'm still deciding, or I'm not certain yet, and it uses more than one word, but it, but it's plain English, then they would do, then they'll, then they'll click on it and, and start working their way through and send something to them. So, so in other words, I wasn't trying to change the entire system, but just give that one option that would be consistent across all of them, and that would just say, I'm still deciding.
And, and that's an easy programming fix, and we can work with the institutions to, to make that happen, whether, whether we, I mean, if they select that and then what we report back to them is the jargon, the undeclared, I mean, we can do something like that, so we can make that happen.
The other thing I would note is that we, we have contracted with a, and a contractor that would, that was going to produce two short videos for us, one for students and one for parents, on how to use Apply Idaho, or not parents, for.
For the educators.
For educators, students and educators. And so we could also address that issue there as well, as if you're undecided, if you don't know what you want to do, but, but it would be.
But when I go on the website, just, I don't have to watch a video.
Right.
To, to know how to use the website. And what I would say is that I deal with a lot of websites that are too complicated, and this is one of the simplest, easiest websites. You know, there seems to be one company in every industry that figures it out, and the rest of them make your life hard. This is the one that, you know, I think, I like the cube, I like the turn, I think it all just works nicely, simple, and with that one change, from my perspective, you've got something that really is going to have a lot of use. It's nicely done.
Thank you. And, and Board Member Hill, you'll be pleased to know that this is mobile-friendly.
Good.
So students can, can apply and do their application on their phone as well.
And they will.
It, it resizes to a, a mobile screen.
And to give credit where credit is due, we've, we've partnered with IDLA on this and just have to give a shout out to them. They, they did all the development for it in, in terms of the, the programming, and they've been fabulous to work with, and they're going to, we will continue to work with them as we, as we build this out and refine it. But I just, I want to publicly thank IDLA, and, and also Carson and Byron have spent a lot of time working with IDLA to, to get the content right, so thank you.
So the, so this, we hope kind of gives you a foundation of kind of where we are at, so that the rest of the conversation can be, are there areas of priority, are there things that we're doing? One of the things that really wasn't mentioned in much detail is the College Application Week. That was also something that we started a number of years ago. It was funded in part by the College Access Challenge Grant, and then as that funding went away, districts have partnered with institutions to, to maintain, continue that FAFSA days where the school districts have a night often, or a day period, where they help students fill out the FAFSA or understand how to do that. So there, there's a number of things that are going on in those areas. We've talked in a number of different types of meetings and task force subcommittees about a summer melt and whether or not there are things we can scale up that are happening to help in that area as well. And then we have some other identified areas, or I would say areas we haven't really covered yet, that we'd like to kind of throw out there on the table to talk about. Blake?
I think one of the ones that has, that we danced around a lot, but haven't particularly addressed head-on, is this, you know, identifying who the decision-makers are and how, how to influence, how to have them help influence the, the student's desire to go on. I mean, as you saw today, while, while we haven't obviously finished the task, you know, we, we've taken intentional steps to address the students, to address their families, to address educators. But there, a survey that was done by, by the University of Idaho that, I'll be vague enough, but yet specific enough that I won't steal their thunder when they release all this, but the, the survey essentially looks, asks one question and, about what was the biggest help or decider or influence on going on to college while you're in high school? And it asks about family members, it asks about visits by college recruiters, it asks about friends, but the, the item that was considered extremely important and number one on the list was information about financial aid and scholarships. That beat family members, that beat college recruiters, it beat everybody else, and then it was reinforced by a very high percentage being concerned, a high percentage of respondents being concerned about their ability to afford and know how to afford second, third, however many years they're going to be in, in higher education, depending on what degree they're pursuing, but if they'd be able to continue to afford it. And in our discussions internally, it sort of occurred to us that while we spend a lot of time talking about affordability and access, and we talk about it in terms of tuition and fees, for example, in, in April, that's always a big discussion point. What we failed to do or haven't done yet is be as intentional as we are in, in helping them learn about going on or helping them apply, but being that intentional in helping them understand how on a case-by-case basis to pay for college, whether it's a certificate associates or bachelor's. We've learned that as, we're considered an extremely credible source, and we put out a lot of what I would call 50,000-foot information about scholarships or about FAFSA, you know, and things like that. Is there an ability to drill down to almost a case-by-case way to help families figure out how they can tackle this issue? Because you have some who have always tried to save and may not have saved enough, you have others where they, where higher education may not have even been considered an option to them. We heard that a lot in our direct admissions post-survey last year, a lot of students saying, I didn't even think I could go to college. And if they didn't think they could go, they probably didn't have, they or their family or, or whoever supports them probably weren't thinking about how to save for it. So how do we help them understand those resources when you, when you pretty consistently hear stories about predatory, you know, student lending or things like that? So I think that that's another one that we sort of put out there for, for a point of discussion or reaction of, you know, something that maybe we should look at tackling or explore tackling as a board and board staff. I think Matt had sort of a, an add-on to that, that idea.
So in the last President's Council meeting, we talked some about the College Parent Academy, which was also mentioned during the Board's May Retreat. And the Presidents, all, all of the Presidents were very supportive of, of this concept that, of basically seeking state funding that would allow us to at least roll out at a, at a limited scale at our institutions, the ability for, for them to offer a college and career awareness exploration for parents. And again, the, the model that I've seen is for the University of Arizona, which they provide that for the school district where University of Arizona is located. And it's actually a 12-week course for students in the eighth grade, for, for, for parents with students in the eighth grade. I think 12 weeks is, weeks is a little bit ambitious for, for us, but even if we could get, you know, a week or, you know, one night a month for, for, for one month, I think if we could begin to really drill down to the parent level and start to, I mean, try to crack the code on the value proposition that is really the challenge that, for particularly in, in some of our rural areas, on the impact and importance of higher education. So that's something that we'll be pursuing between now and August, is crafting a, a request around that concept.
Because one, one thing we know if we keep this up is, you know, every eighth grader will, should know here, or get the, the drift here soon, that when they're a senior in high school, they're going to be accepted to college. So that gets you back to how do we help, if, if they see that coming in the future, how do we help them plan for that at a family level? Not just the, the act of going to classes, but the, the ability to pay for those classes and to benefit from this opportunity. One other point we had discussed was how do we incentivize this, that kind of behavior by parents or, or other behaviors we'd want to see to encourage students to go on?
And, and what Blake is, is referring to is something that has been talked about in our office and has come to be known as Board Rewards, which is a tough one to say three times fast. But one of the ideas that, that we've thrown around, it, it was kind of similar to a situation, or a pilot program that was done in Massachusetts, where they, they had scholarships, they were, they were small amounts of scholarships that were available to students based on their behavior. So whether they took 15 credits, they received a scholarship; if they took 18 credits, they received a greater scholarship. What we have talked about is doing something similar, but rather than giving scholarship dollars, it's almost like reward points, like your, your frequent flyer card, that then seeking from the legislature a pot of money that is then used to reimburse the institutions, so those students could, could look at some of the behaviors that would, that have been shown to, for them to be successful. So whether that's taking 15 credits in a semester and you earn 100 points, whether it's taking summer school courses and you earn 100 points, whether it's, what's up?
Completing the FAFSA.
Completing the FAFSA, or, or if the, the student and the parent, even reaching down into high school, if the student and the parent attend one of the. into high school, if the student and the parent attend one of these Parent Academy, successfully complete the Parent Academy, then they would receive points. Those points could then be redeemed for the cost of a, of a certain number of credits in a course. So now your, your tuition bill can actually be reduced by however many points you're redeeming. So it may, 300 points and you may be able to redeem the cost of a three-credit course, which would then be taken off your tuition bill. But the student is then able to say, "I, if I, I can go to school. I lost my job. How do I pay for college? Well, I can redeem my points at that time and I can continue to go on." That's, that's one of the ideas that, that has been talked about, to try and help kids focus on, on the cost of, of their education and ways to reduce that cost. Also incentivizing those students to, to exhibit behaviors that we know will help them complete on time or, or whether it's, it's the grades. I mean, you could have a merit component to that as well. But those are some of the, another idea that, that has been talked about to try and help out with, with what Blake was mentioning.
Go ahead, Don. Sorry.
I like the, the examples you've laid out, but I, I think they could all be done. You know, a, a school district or university, higher ed institution, these are all things that are easily done by them already. And I guess I'm a little concerned about requesting money for things like this when I think that a school district could easily set up some kind of a parent activity, you know, after school, in the evening, whatever. And I don't think it'd utilize that many resources.
And there are some areas where school districts are doing not so much the Parent Academy piece, but they do have parent nights on their own where they bring parents in and help to inform them about different things like, you know, going on or the college and career, or the learning, eighth grade learning plans and those different things. But one of, when you try and do it, I mean, they're choosing to do it with the resources that they have. If it's something that you'd want to scale statewide in order to make sure that it was resourced, that's when we'd look at needing to request additional funding to do it.
You know, school districts have a responsibility to develop relationships within their community. And sometimes I just don't think they avail themselves of those opportunities.
Any comments or questions?
I have a general question. My personal peeve is websites with clearly outdated information. What is your mechanism for refresh?
On?
Well, for example, so I, it's a bit of a trap. I pulled up your college grid, the data and it is specifically stated to be 2014, 2015. The costs will be out of date. Application fees will be out of date. I know some of them are. If you're going to do this, you have to have a refresh cycle that's, and there may be other players. That's, I just happened across.
So Board Member Hill, we recognize a few of those are out of date. We, we lapsed for a short period on a contract to, to continue the maintenance of this site. Now that the contract's been renewed in, in an effort to follow state purchasing requirements. So I, the 30-day work plan-
Blame the state.
No, no. The, the 30-day work plan, the item number one is update the entire site to make sure that it's, everything is leading into the 2017, 18 school year. Mm-hmm.
Now, I would just throw out there a little bit off of Board Member, Member Saltman's comment, is that there are some additional things that we've, we are doing and providing for school districts should they choose. So we've been working with IDLA to make sure that they have the courses necessary for a student to get an associate's degree. So that way, if a student is in one of our more remote areas and maybe that school can only offer one or two dual-credit courses, the student would have the option of picking up the other courses through IDLA. The, the barrier that we're looking at right now there is that they've managed to have all of the courses necessary. However, they're not all at the same institution. And it's really hard for students to understand, particularly if they're trying to then transfer from not only one institution, but three institutions into a single institution, those credits to get awarded the degree. So there's some things in the, in that area that the Board might want to think about and ways of providing a more seamless transfer for those types of things. We're also working on developing additional checklists, if you will, where school districts could provide the students who are participating in, well, in anything and says, you know, here's, if you want to, if you're going to take advantage of advanced opportunities, here's a list that you could go through. And at the end, you could either have a certificate in a career pathway or be making progress towards a degree pathway in a certain area.
Well, it seems like on IDLA, they could ask a question of the student, what institution of higher learning do you want your credits, you know, attributed to? And then, you know, they fill it out once and they'd always go there.
A part of the issue is the, so the Board policy requires that when a, because the institution is responsible for the quality and rigor if they're going to give post-secondary credits. And so we have a policy that requires that the teacher at the high school, in this case, meets the same requirements as their instructors on campus, or they, or they have to have a higher level of supervision and training from the institution. So it may be that the teacher didn't qualify at one institution. And so BSU may be offering the credits for a couple math, some of the math courses. And CSI might have agreed to offer the credits based on the instructor's qualifications for the English credits. So it's, it's the institutions that control whether they're going to give the post-secondary credits, if that makes sense, more than the student picking where they want to go.
But why would we not have, given the rural nature of Idaho and the realities that we just talked about, why would we not have a composite degree, a Regents degree, a Board degree, a State degree that, I mean, we are approving those courses of study and all of that. I don't, I don't think we should let that be a challenge. If a student and salmon wants to get an associate's degree and they can do it through IDLA, I think there should be a designated degree they can get that reflects the fact that they did their work from a variety of institutions. Richard, you were going to say something?
Well, just a general comment. Most of what we've been talking about today are improvements in process, make it easier for students to reiterate the process. And we gave, kind of gave short shrift to the notion of the cultural notion of, of how we value education in the state of Idaho. I think we've got to do some more work around, while I recognize that all the process things will help, we've still got to figure out some way to accentuate the value of a, of education beyond high school. And we're doing that in the context of positive economic headwind. So I hope we, and I don't know how we do that, frankly. I wish I, I wish I knew how we got that done. But I think we need to do a whole lot more thinking about that.
Go ahead. Ladies first.
Always the gentleman. I would, I would agree. In fact, it's something that, for the entire time that I've been working for the Board, it's something that we've kind of danced around and identified that one of the larger issues is a cultural issue and, and the value that people who live in Idaho feel education has. But it's not, the message can't just be a return on investment discussion. Because some of the conversations I've had with individuals in some of our more rural areas is that's why they don't want them to go on, because they don't want them to leave. And they know if they get a post-secondary education, they're not going to stay in their community because those types of jobs aren't there. So it is a very complicated conversation. And it is something that I, that it, it would be certainly great to have some solutions around.
I think, oh, go ahead.
If I might, I'm not entirely sure I agree with the statement, if I, if a child gets some level of post-secondary education, the jobs aren't there. In the Workforce Development Task Force, we heard over and over again from employers in specific regions that the jobs are there for certificates and those sorts of things. So I think that's the gap here. It tends to view going on and push out to two- and four-year schools. And if you go, if you had in these 10th, 11th grade checklists, either in the PDF or the form, something that identified, made those who are not on a college path, give them an opportunity to identify what actually might be available locally but did require certification. Diesel Tech, whatever it might be, I don't know. But that's, to me, an element that's missing in this nine, 10, 11, 12 hierarchy as we march through it. And you might actually just persuade some of those that drift away in 10th and 11th grade that it's worth hanging on and getting a certificate that can allow them to have a good job and stay locally.
And to add to both Dr. Hill's point and Tracy's, we, we've probably, I think we've reached the point in this messaging about college and career and post-high school plans and that, that it needs to become a more regional message. I think because we, even though we're a low-population state, it's a very diverse state, you know, when you look economically, north to southeast to west, and, and opportunity, north, southeast, west. And that doesn't mean lack of opportunity versus plethora. It means type of opportunity across the state. And, and how do we tailor those messages? One network we have that is, I'd say, just coming out of its infancy, is the, the Regional Educate Idaho Networks, which are, I think there's six of them now around the state. And these are networks of employers with higher education institutions, with school districts, identifying methods by which they can encourage students after high school to, to go on in what I believe to be the broadest of definitions. It's, you know, and then they, they're able to give it a, a local spin. I mean, one example I had heard was the Educate Idaho Network around Twin Falls sponsored a job fair. And they had the, not only did they have a job fair, they had the higher education institutions represented at the job fair. And what it enabled to happen was a St. Luke's representative talked to a high school student about lots of jobs that are available, one being phlebotomist, which I think is about a 16-week certi-, certificate program. The student was interested in that kind of position. And the rep from St. Luke said, "I'll tell you what. If you go over to CSI and learn about how to enter this phlebotomy program after you graduate from high school, come back and see me in January. Because I always need them. And if you can, if you can follow that cycle, I'm fairly sure I'll have a job waiting for you." You know, and, and that's the kind of, of opportunity that those more local networks can make it a regional message versus a statewide message.
So Blake, your example there required contact between industry, in that case, and the students, some forum for that happening. And that's really where the, the school districts locally have to create connections to local industry so the student can be informed. And these websites can assist, but they can't replace that.
Right.
It, it seems like the partnership should be with the school districts and the local one-stop shops. The new, newly enacted labor requirements, WOAI, and all of that require a lot of work with youth. And, and those contracts were given to this, to the one-stop shops throughout the state. So we have those connections through the Workforce Council, through the Labor Department, through CTE, through the institutions. I think it's just a matter of getting one message in central places where that can be delivered. I think we have the pieces in place to do it, if we just get everybody on the same page with the hymnal.
Board Member Westerberg, one of the things that, that we also include when we send out those direct admissions letters, there is messaging in there about the value of education. It's not, it's not just saying, "Here are the colleges that you've been accepted to." But we have also been including things on, on return on a college investment. Now, again, that's a statewide perspective because we, we recognize that a lot of the people who are receiving those letters, as Blake mentioned, have not thought about college. And, and it's true. We, in surveying those students, we found that there were many of them who said, "I didn't know that I could go on." And so providing them reasoning why college is important. Now, that's an area that we can continue to, to try and tighten up is, is that messaging about the value of education, especially with the, the economic situation currently where it's, it's improving.
Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Madam Acting President, excuse me.
I was thinking of, go ahead.
And please, I didn't, I didn't mean that as criticism. But I, but I think the influential group around the student is an area we need to spend considerable amount of time, whether it's parents, guardians, or whether it's counselors. Because students rarely are the ones that make the total decision about whether they're headed on or not.
It, what we were discussing was we have some technical needs here. So this might be a good time for us to take a break. Sherry, do you want to make?
I, I do. As we're talking about, Board Member Westerberg, you bring up a good point. We're talking about processes, but we, we don't make that real-life connection for the kids. And, you know, we're box checking, we're talking about the FAFSA. We do all those great things. School districts are out there having their FAFSA night. And we had parent night for college and career advising. But the one thing that I saw them do in Clarkfork when I was visiting was that real-life connection with Mastery Based is one opportunity that we will have in nine through 12 to make, kids don't, when you say, "Go on to college," that is a, some pie in the sky conversation for some cultures. And so in Clarkfork, when they actually get the opportunity through Mastery Based to go out and have that real-life experience with hospitality, one young lady told me, "I didn't know that was a career pathway." College, to me, was majoring in some engineering. We have said it and said it and said it, but it didn't sink in until she had the opportunity to go work, actually doing the job and having that hands-on experience. And Blake, you brought it up when you said, you know, the, the kids are going over to the college and looking at phlebotomy, you know, ID phlebotomist. They need more of those opportunities and less of the box-checking processes as a superintendent is what I'm seeing when I'm out there.
That's a good point.
So I would just, go ahead, real quick, add to that. To think about while you're on a break is, so a policy piece that could go with that is, is there something more that the Board wants to do around service learning? Service learning is something that our institutions have used with some of their programs to connect students to different types of industries for a shorter period than an internship or an apprenticeship to give them that feel. Some high schools do it. Is that something as a state we want to promote?
Okay, we will be in recess until 3 o'clock. Big break.
Big break.
They have no power here, so they won't.
Oh, gotcha.
Is it not plugged in?
Yeah, it mustn't be plugged in.
Do a job in hospitality and all.
She just graduated, but managerial level, they said she, they're going to send her on.
Phlebotomy is very much.
She said that was never any sort of, that was a lot of eyes.
That's the point, yeah.
We have to recognize.
These guys are gone.
Especially this.
Let's get it.
There's something.
Trying to figure out.
Is it everything that's in this?
Tradition, who doesn't show up?
So now, how do you measure that? How do you know?
It's a very, it's a very difficult.
So there's a lot of things in this part of this conversation to really consider.
Regardless of, you know, if you use different students, the other is going to accept it, because that's what says it when the transfer comes in.
They don't, the transfer is going to be an institution.
So, you know, I feel that's a certain way that was really, because his question was, what do they just check?
To get a degree, you know, because it's a different institution.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Because, yeah, he was wanting to know, because his question had, if, if one institution was to, Tracy, is it one institution for all the credits?
And so you got the residency department.
So, you know, Don's, he just put a box that you know, they, and you let that institution and Jackson student to say, this is, this is what you, you know, to be able to say this is what you should take, you know, do this, and first you take, there are no other things.
Anyway, I talked to Sharon on this, because I heard this, right, AA people, they're not, they, I think it doesn't, they don't.
No.
So, no, there's no one institution that, if they were going to do everything digitally remotely, whatever, they're still not a sufficient, they're, but what they can do, whether it's a major or whatever, you know, at some point, you can piece all these courses together, and confirm a degree is a resident.
So, you know, I feel that's a certain way that was really, because his question was, what do they just check?
To get a degree, you know, because it's a different institution.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Because, yeah, he was wanting to know, because his question had, if, if one institution was to, Tracy, is it one institution for all the credits?
And so you got the residency department.
So, you know, Don's, he just put a box that you know, they, and you let that institution and Jackson student to say, this is, this is what you, you know, to be able to say
this is what you should take, you know, do this, and first you take, there are no other
things.
Anyway, I talked to Sharon on this, because I heard this, right, AA people, they're not, they, I think it doesn't, they don't.
No.
So, no, there's no one institution that, if they were going to do everything digitally remotely, whatever, they're still not a sufficient, they're, but what they can do, whether it's a major or whatever, you know, at some point, you can piece all these courses together, and confirm a degree is a resident.
So, anyway, that's something to think about, I, I respect that.
Now, in the deeper, when we got in.
It's going good.
Wait, I talked to you earlier, is exactly everything that's been talked about here.
And part of it is just how the conversation, what, you know, because we, we were, we really just wanted to give them an update on all the special plans, next steps.
I think it's very problematic, so, you know, that's, well, glad you.
I mean, I, I don't know if you saw my body, which I was getting.
So I'm going to test this, I'm going to do this, I wanted to.
It's more in my heart.
I tried to, that was, I mean, I didn't see that, but that's what, that's what I heard.
But, that was my thoughts when we were first setting out, but Tyler wanted us, when we started.
I don't know why it was pulled out.
It worked.
It's just.
I hit the wrong screen.
But, but, I mean, it's more informal, so, but, anyway, we, we went for. I think, yeah, that's exactly what we were talking about. Yeah, because we were, we were going. What? I told, I told Randall, my team, afraid to get up and, it all bleeds.
Where are you going?
New York.
Oh, that's right.
I have some family that went out there last week, sent a bunch of pictures too. I knew that you had to leave right in there, but that's why we got second in the pocket holders.
Yeah, exactly.
So every night, you know, you, sure, you have to reflect.
I'll try.
No, you know, we want you to be around for long, because we get rolled up on the agenda.
Get into my, and, yeah, and he said he decided not to go on, he just graduated high school. He said he decided not to go on because he wanted to end up with a hundred thousand dollars. I'm like, we should, we should, we should.
There's a lot of misinformation.
So, one of the things we could do, we have to call it now, we can, but we don't have resources, we just have to develop our, and, that's what I was trying to say, it's, it's people that, if you go to college, you'll miss much more places, it's going to be, you go to college today, there's a little bit.
Power, good.
Oh, nice, nice, we get this guy powered up now, cool.
Okay, there is a power shift right there in case you need.
Yeah, no, I'm good. We're just about, talk to me.
Okay, great.
How's the sound over here?
It's good. Very good.
But the main meeting, do you mean, we download today's session, or?
Yeah, we will have an executive session, but that's just, it's not, well, I, we would rather move to a small.
I believe you guys are going to drift with.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, we're the guys in the back trying to.
Okay, thanks for your help.
Appreciate when you guys keep the mic closed, that's nice, makes my job easier.
Yeah, it's great, thank you very much.
It's beautiful, did we have?
All I'm going to do is, see, if you have any more thoughts. And the topic, and, and the, that were like very, and, I couldn't choose between the cookie store lot, too.
Does more supervising company, but it wasn't, it was the overs, and all of the, it would be.
I've got the macadamia one and that one. We don't have a quorum. That would be a quorum today. We only have seven.
What's my excuse?
So, um.
Because you're tired.
Can we continue this conversation anymore?
I thought I would just ask. They have us prepared to move back to headlines.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say, if we really have any more discussion, I'm going to, I'm probably going to, some of this, I believe.
Because we'll have to, you can buy them.
Talking your game down there. Amby. Golf.
Thank you all. We're going to invite Randall to come to the table, we should have done that before. See if he has something he wants to add. And in the meantime, while we're waiting for him, do any of the board members have anything else they want to raise? Or, I know you had 12 minutes to think about Tracy's question about policy. Any further insight on what we've heard so far? All right, well, Randall, we would like to, to ask you if you have something you want to add, and I apologize that we didn't ask you to come to the front sooner. From your perspective, anything?
Just a few notes.
Raise your hand, Randall, he's trying to get the microphone. Thank you.
Just a few notes that I would, I would share with the board is, I, I think that culture is a big piece of the discussions that I've been involved with over the course of the past six months, whether it's task force meetings, work group meetings, summits, summits this past week with advising and counseling, whether it's having traveled to institutions and meeting with folks that work in academic and student support. I, I think a lot of what you've discussed today, looking back at the, you know, beginning in eighth and ninth and 10th grade, certainly realizing that students won't have their life mapped out at that point in time, is important, and recognizing that fact is important. But providing them with some, some type of framework for where they want to go, or what they're thinking about in, in the future, whether it's, you know, utilizing sort of a meta-major type framework, or as at NIC, I think it's a focus field, Dr. Briggs explained earlier in the meeting with the board, JFAC. Those are important concepts, and whether or not it's a statewide framework you would use for something like that, or whether that's unique to each institution, I think there's something to be said about trying to have some clarity and some transparency to students who don't understand post-secondary, to be able to understand what, and their parents to understand what those things are. And so Board Member Scoggins earlier mentioned, no, he returns, you know, it's, one thing to think about with the Apply Idaho website is, is when we, in the field of advising, anyway, there's a couple different competing thoughts, thought processes on students who declare an undeclared major. One is certainly you give the opportunity for students to explore and to be able to decide what works for them or what does not work for them. The other theory in advising, having worked in this field, is that the, the trend is to try to encourage students to at least indicate what type of field they want to go into earlier without necessarily declaring that as their course of study for the rest of their life. The thing about a meta-major or a focus field that is a benefit is that it allows a student to not necessarily commit to a particular major, but to, obviously to explore that area. And so if a student chooses to switch from one field to another field, they don't lose degree progress. And I think it's important to remember that institutions are accountable for these students, right? And so, and it, and with degree progress, and that if you're allowing a student to enter in as an undecided or an undeclared, sometimes that can be, you know, it can be beneficial, and at the same time, it can, there can be some adverse effects as well. So you'll see there is a trend in some places where undecided or undeclared is becoming less of an option. But there, again, there's competing theories on what, on, on what the benefit and what the value is of, of having that. I'll stop there.
I get your point, and I also think there are juncture points through this process. If you're accepted to a college, go through the application process, that then may be a juncture point where they guide you into selecting a meta-major. What I'm saying is, the first gate is simply a multi-institution, online, click five boxes, and I don't know what I'm going to do, and I can't find it here, so I'm not going to apply until, because they say I got to know first, so I'm going to have to wait, and that might take me a year or two. So it's, it's about where in the process you might want to do that, as well as whether you need to do it, because there's two questions.
Yeah. And so I'd certainly, you know, with those points, I, I think that goes back to a point that you made earlier for parents that don't understand, you know, what a major is, or what a degree looks like, and how, what a, what a credit hour is, and all, the, the basic nuts and bolts. That's, that sort of feeds into the, the larger conversation about how do you inform students and parents earlier, and using, and using a career, a college and career plan earlier to help achieve that. And so hopefully, when they get to a point where, and they're in their senior year, I, you know, if the vision is with the task force in 2025 or beyond, that by the time students get to that point, they have a little bit better idea that they're not necessarily having to look at undeclared or undecided as an option. But certainly there are, you know, there, there's contingencies that should be accounted for.
Okay, then Debbie, and then, did you have something, okay, Debbie?
I think it's addressed very easily, that the very first thing that appears when you click on the dropdown is, "I don't know." And then accounting, biology, chemistry, you know, that that is the default answer, is, "I don't know." Then you don't even have to contemplate, well, do I have to look through here? Someone, I don't, I just feel like that makes it really easy.
Richard?
Well, it, it appears to me there's something really helpful in telling the university you want to go to that you don't know, that there could be some intrusive advising that happened. You're now identifying a target student that needs some help with discussion.
I agree.
Rather than forcing them into a biology choice when they really don't know that it's biology.
And particularly since the institutions across the board have upped the career advising, using that more intrusive model. I, I agree. Other comments? Something more you want to add, Randall?
No, the only thing I would say is that, that, those are just two competing thoughts or theories on this that's in the field out there. I don't necessarily know if one's right or wrong, you know, you're, you're charged with doing what's in the best for the citizens of Idaho. The other thing I would say, there was a question raised by Board Member Saltman with respect to dual credit and AA, or students earning a degree certi-, a degree or some type of certification through IDLA. Those credits, yes, they, there are different standards for which instruction should be delivered from institutions, depending on what those institutions call for with their instructors. But if I'm not mistaken, I do believe that those credits will transfer across the, all the institutions. So if you do have dual credit taken at one institution that has one standard for instructors to teach dual credit, and you transfer them to another institution that has a different standard, those do indeed articulate, and so they can help achieve degree progress, if I understand the discussion from earlier. I just don't know if there was a point of clarification needed on that or not. But, but as it stands, I think IDLA, I don't know if this was, I don't recall this being shared earlier, not, not all, all courses can be delivered at this time to, through IDLA to achieve an associate of arts degree, but I do know that a GM certificate is certain-
for the executive session.
That's Blue Creek.
Sorry?
We had lunch in Blue Creek.
I thought it was the Driftwood Bay.
That's downstairs.
Oh.
Where we were with J-FAC.
Where do you want to go?
So someone tell me where we're going. Are we going downstairs, or are we going next door?
Downstairs.
Downstairs. To the Driftwood Bay Room where we were this morning. Thank you, Mr. Saltman.